Alright, everybody, good evening, good afternoon, all those other good things. Uh, we'll call the committee meeting to order for Monday, September 3rd. And first on our agenda, under administrative efficiency, we have a presentation regarding the United States Census 2020. And Mark, did I hear where it was? Oh, my goodness, it's right over here. I gotta put you on to my way. Let's, let's see what happens here. Yes, yes, just put them.
Alright, so, hi, Mark, I'm the regional representative of County, but I'm the regional representative for partnership specialists. Basically, what we work on is creating the partnerships for the census so that we can get a complete count within the county. We realize that when we look at our information, one of the things we look at are a projection that we can calculate from the previous census that tells us areas that are gonna be low-count areas or hard-to-count areas. So, we look at those as areas that we wanna focus on. Scanty County obviously has some, you know, hard-count or low-count areas, so we wanna make sure that when we create a complete count committee, which is something that the city will initiate and the mayor's office would initiate, that complete count committee will partner with local organizations to actually get out and do some outreach and touch base with those organizations, with those communities, so that they're able to understand the census and respond to the census, so that we get a good, accurate, complete count of where everybody is and where they live. So, I'm just gonna, hopefully this goes over there, but I'm just gonna go through a quick presentation, just so you know a little bit about the census. I'll keep this like 10 minutes, so I don't take up all your time or less. But basically, the mission of the census is to serve as the nation's, you know, leading provider of quality data. This data is used by governments, by planning boards, a lot of different ways to actually look forward at where you have transportation services, where roads need, you know, to be enhanced, or where you might be looking to put your next casino, if you need another casino. So, those types of things are types of data that come out of the census for communities to actually use. It is, what we, you know, the purpose is to actually count everybody once, only once, and where they are at, you know, that time or that place that we need them counted. Things where that gets difficult is homeless or transient populations, and also college students who actually, you know, parents try to claim them at their home, say they live there 50% of the time, but actually, the college is where they live for the majority of the time, so we count them at the college. So, those are the only ones that get a little bit, you know, fickle. So, just about the Census Bureau, we're the largest statistical agency in the US. We provide more than 130 survey programs. These range from the, the current census, which we're about to engage in, to the American Community Survey, which a lot, a lot of people who are marketers or other organizations may know that one better, because that one actually gives you information on median income of families, age of families that live in a home. It, it gives you a lot of different information that might be more useful than just the census, which just gives us a count of the number of people in the country. So, that, that's really the, you know, and we do some economic programs, where we do an economic census and a census of governments. Those only happen every two and seven years, though. So, the 2020 census, just say it is mandated by law. Everybody has to reply, it's, it's actually in the Constitution, it was one of the first things they put in there, was to get a good, accurate count of our population. It's conducted every 10 years, it's been, conducted since 1790. You know, George Washington was one of the first people to identify problems with the census, because people didn't wanna be counted, because they didn't wanna be taxed, so they had an undercount, and the first time it was ever, you know, it conducted was an undercount. But since then, it's improved, and, you know, we've had an ever-increasing population. So, now, we're counting about 330 million people across the country, and that's, you know, looking at over 140 million housing units across the country. So, this is, it's a huge undertaking for the federal government. One of the things that we pride ourselves on is confidentiality. Everyone that works for the census takes an oath to protect the information that they're collecting. This information can't be shared with anyone. Courts can't even request this information to, you know, utilize in a court hearing. This information is strictly protected. The only information you can get out of it is the actual number that comes out at the end. So, nothing else can be seen, no information that you fill out in the, in the census is actually given to us. We don't ask for any personal identifiable information, so that, that type of stuff would, would not be present. If somebody ever called you saying they were from the census asking for money or anything like that, it's not legit, just like those IRS, you know, type of things. We don't ask for any of that information. Alright, so with the census, the use of the information, and this is one of the most important ones, we have Paul Tonko is actually going around this week within his district promoting the census and actually getting communities on board with conducting the census, because one of the big things that it does have an impact on is the congressional districts. So, if, if the census is, you know, you know, if our numbers aren't counted correctly, we could actually lose a congressional district. If, you know, if it is counted appropriately, we find out you have more population, we might have that need for growing a district. So, that is one of the, the main reasons, the US census, it does affect your representation in government. It also, you know, helps define legislative districts, school districts, and one of the great tools, I probably won't get into here, but I will share this presentation with you, so you have all the information. But one of the great tools you can use is our Rome tool, which is our kind of outreach mapper, which gives you detailed information about the, the county or the city, and you can really drive down into the data. You can see the areas that are hard to count, you can see the legislative districts overlaid, you can see the school districts overlaid onto the map, so you understand, you know, how many people are in that particular area that are going to that school district or this school district, and how that can change if a count is one side or the other. So, a school district's line could change from one area to the other if the count is higher in one community. So, this has a great impact on what governments will use and, and nonprofit organizations would use to determine how they appropriate their services. And, and one of the larger things that, you know, this determines is $675 billion in federal funding are out there. And that $675 billion is allocated to states, local governments, communities, based on the census. So, if, if a community organization, you know, say we have, the Guineanese population is, is looking, you know, to have some more nonprofits out there that need grants, this money is out there, but if we don't know the actual count of the Guineanese population in Scanty, we won't see that money enhance, you know, be available to them, because we won't know the actual number. This, this was actually represented down in New York, we had a population down in New York, which was in a city, which was a Korean-based population, they were looking to get counted, they made sure that they had their organizations out there to make sure that people were responding to the census, and they actually saw the, an increase in that population counted in the city. So, that enhances services in the city to that, that local community. So, now, they have, you know, language-specific services for that community, they have organizations that can get grants for that specific community. So, it's important that you have your organizations like the city council and the mayor's office and nonprofits out there promoting engagement in the census and actually get people to complete it. $675 is a, you know, billion is a big amount to leave on the table, and a lot of communities think, oh, it's no big deal, the census will happen, people will respond, but if they don't respond, that money, if, you know, were undercounted in Scanty County, you'll see that money go to the next, you know, county over. You know, Albany's been very vocal about getting, you know, out there and getting this going, so we don't wanna see, you know, money just go right next door, when it could've been coming right here to actually improve social services and other programs that are available in Scanty County. Data protection, as I said, we are mandated by federal law. I don't really wanna spend five years in prison, I don't wanna pay $250,000, so we keep this pretty, we're, we're on this one, we're on cybersecurity, we're on confidentiality, and you won't hear, I mean, nobody will divulge information. A little bit about how the census works, and this is what we're here doing right now, is we, we know where we need to count. Right now, we're looking at is the motivation of getting people to respond, we're getting to that phase. Census takes place in April, so people will start getting mailed, you know, pieces of information that will basically tell them how to get online to complete the census or to complete it by phone. If they don't respond to either of those avenues, that's when you see, somebody will actually start going out to the door. And I've left some flyers on the table for you guys, but this is about jobs with the census takers, the actual people who go out there and actually, you know, pound the pavement and knock on doors to take account of people that live in a home. It's not as invasive as people think, they're more so just going out counting kind of the number of units maybe in an apartment, so they understand how many units are there. If they can get people, they will ask how many people reside in, in the home. So, it's, it's, it's very, you know, it's not too invasive, they're not stalking people or anything like that, but there are plenty of jobs that will be available once we get going into the census, starting, you know, right now, we're doing the hiring process, so if you have people, you know of organizations that have people looking, couple of things, 18-plus, they have to pass a background check with the federal government, so we, we require 18-plus. And other than that, you know, stipulation, there's really not too much. It's a good-paying job, it does, it is only temporary, so it's, it's like a six-month period, but they're very good-paying jobs, and, and they certainly are ones that, you know, people are looking to take advantage of. There's some information there, but we'll be sending out more as we get going. And then, once we're done, once we've done, we've motivated people to respond, then we, you know, the census actually occurs where we're counting the people, and then, once those results are in, we send those off to the president for affirmation, and then, that's kind of it, the data then becomes available to the public. It's not a, you know, really complicated process, he just basically says, yep, these results are complete, and sends them off. We do have language assistance available, 12 non-English languages available for the census. We also have materials that can be sent out in, in those 12 languages, as well as 59 other non-language for print materials. The, the 12 non-English languages, which are, you know, the core ones that we focus on are ones that actually we ask people who can translate questions and help individuals on phone or online. The 59, we just have materials in some of the others, those other languages. So, if somebody calls up looking for Spanish-speaking or Polish, we can actually assist them through the process of answering those questions. These are some of the languages, the ones in the, you know, red are the, purplish and blue are the core ones that we focus on, and the others are all language-specific, are only material-specific. So, if you're looking for materials in any of those languages, if you need it in Amharic or Dutch, we have materials that we can translate available to you. Dutch might be important for the city, I don't know. So, looking ahead, this is where we're at, we will start advertising in January for the census, and that's something we're gonna rely on, you know, our, our complete count committee to help us with, and that, and that's something that you guys will be helping us to get out and, and get that message out to the media, to do, you know, the press conference, to announce that the city has moved forward with a, a complete count committee. And just so you, this is our census office, we have regional offices in Buffalo, Syracuse, Albany, and then downstate. The Albany one represents all the way up to Plasberg, so pretty significant territory. There are six regions overall for the census across the country. So, if that gives you the magnitude of this area overall, it actually is from New York all the way up to Maine for the district or for the census count. That's where New York represents, all the way up to that district. We are recruiting, we have office positions, some office positions are still available, we're still looking for some partnership specialists, we're still looking for some recruiting managers and clerical support. We also have, at that other side of it, we'll have the enumerators or the counters who will go out, and those, I will send again this, this information to all of you, so that you can have the links and you can send those to whichever organizations you'd like. Skip through a couple of these, just so we can get to our... So, one of the things we're looking for the city to initiate is a complete count committee, and this is an organization that basically moves forward to connect with all the other organizations in the community to ensure that we can get an accurate count. You are the best resource we have for engaging population locally. You know the population locally, you know the organizations that you need to work with to get people to respond, and that's why we look for you to establish that complete count committee, because you know the people that, you know, where we're gonna have the hardest time counting, or where we might encounter the, you know, most resistance to counting. So, we look to you to help us identify those areas and identify organizations that can actually help with it. We've talked with, like, the Scanty intercity ministries, you know, they've identified areas where they can definitely help us, where we can get involved with food pantries, and we can, you know, establish some communication with people who come there, so that they understand the importance of the census. We, you know, we find that, you know, when we're looking at the hard-to-count areas, and I, I believe I have a map in here, which I'll show you, but it, it does really, you know, in Scanty, we can pinpoint where that area is. It's gonna be some of our more impoverished areas, or, you know, some of the areas where we've, we know that there's a, a resistance to being counted, because there's either skepticism about government, or there's another reason why they just don't feel, they don't want you to know how many people live there, for whatever reason. So, those are the areas that we focus on, and we're trying to get counted. Scanty has had this, you know, that pocket since the last census, so that's what we're trying to improve, is that we get that pocket of, you know, undercounted, you know, individuals to be included in this census, so that we have a much better count. Striving for 100%, will we get it? Probably not, but we do hope we can get close to that, so that we have a much better count than we did in previous census. And this only happens every 10 years, so it's, you know, this is kind of like, you know, if we don't get it this 10 years, then we have to wait another 10 to get, you know, the next batch of funding that we, we might want to, to have that impact. So, how we support you, we'll give you promotional materials, flyers, you know, social media articles, newsletter articles, whatever you need to actually enhance that communication message to the population. You know, we've met with the mayor's office and got them that same message, but we also give you access to the materials yourself, so if you need to utilize, you know, these for an organization, you can reach right in there, get the materials, download them, and you can start using those to post social media, or if you need help with newsletter articles, we can kind of craft those to speak to the current population you're looking at hitting, or just to the community in general. Being, I don't know, what am I on, 40-something years living in Scanty? I hope I know Scanty pretty well, but, you know, that would be my offer to you, is that I can hopefully twist some of the articles that you might wanna put out there, then I can offer some input from, you know, a resident who's been here for a long time. Activities that we, you know, one, we'll be a part of your complete count committee, we'll be, you know, there to, you know, help you host events, put on events. If you need us to speak on anything, to engage an audience, we'll be there to do that. There are two of us that represent the area in Scanty County, so I know, Scanty County is the smallest county in New York, so two of us should be able to handle the whole county, I, I hope. But we also have other support from, you know, our partnership specialists in Albany, or Rensselaer County can also come in as, in support, if it's a larger event. So, we're there to do that, we're there to help with recruiting, we have a recruiting office in Albany, so we can get our recruiter to come out and help with events. If we're talking about job opportunities and getting people engaged with being a census taker, we can bring our recruiter out to help in explaining that. A complete count committee, and I'll leave at this one, but what it is, is a group of government and community leaders who will come together to raise awareness about the census and, and motivate the community members to engage with completing the census. Who you'd want on your complete count committee can vary, I mean, obviously, but we're looking for certain, you know, libraries are a great partner to be involved in that, because one of the things libraries offer is access to computers, access to resources that individuals who don't have them can actually go there to complete the census. So, that's, that's one reason for libraries being on the list. We look at immigrant organizations, faith-based organizations, a variety of other community-based organizations that you may want to select. Once that's, you know, you've got your committee, you can break it down into subcommittees if you want, if you have, you know, particular niche populations you wanna focus on, say, veterans' population, you wanna make sure that all the veterans are counted, you can start to identify subcommittees that you'd like to get out there to help spread the word. One of the important things will be to appoint a chair, and once that happens, then we put you in, in touch with a partnership liaison specialist who will really kind of push your activities forward. I know the mayor was eager to get on with a, kind of a launch of the complete count committee, but we are waiting on, you know, his schedule to just kind of formulate, you know, a, a good plan and when that will be. So, and once that happens, I think, you know, the rest of you would be involved in, in helping to connect us with the right organizations in the community to actually engage the population in completing the census. My last slide is actually my contact information, so I'll just, you know, send you the presentations that you have that. I left you some folders, which basically have a lot of bit, uh, information about the complete count committee in it, as well as, you know, basics about why we conduct the census, why the census is important, but if you have any questions, I can answer those briefly, quickly.
You said that there's, because there's people not collect any person who can identify, so when you go to someone's house, what happens?
They're just looking to count how many people live there, that's it.
No names, no, yeah, 'cause it's not needed, we don't need to know the name of the person that lives there, we just need to know you live there, that you're living in Scanty County, you're living in, you know, this particular house at this time, that's all we need to know.
The age of the people, none of that.
They can, they can put that information in, but it's not, you know, it's not required, we really just need to know how many people are living here. I mean, there is, there are, if somebody's actually taking the census, there is other information in it that would identify some of that, but that's more to help with some of the other, you know, you know, basically, if you, you have children, we want, you know, we'd like to know that there's children living in the house, and, and that has impacts on, like we said, school districting and other funding that might come too, through social programs, or if it's, you know, welfare programs that need to be calculated into the mix of dollars, age is a factor in some of those, and, and even social services, because you have elderly population, so there's, there's an impact with elderly services, so. So, some, age is important, but they're just gonna ask the basics, and, and you really don't, they just wanna know you live there, and that's where you spend the majority of your time.
Thank you.
An interesting thing, you can do this online now, too.
Yeah, so, the census is, the, the core of the census will be sent out online, so people will receive an invitation to go online, complete the census. Most people hopefully will do it from their own homes, but like we said, if they can't, that's where we look to outside resources, like a library or some other nonprofit organization that can help with establishing that connection to complete it. People will get a code, and they just go in and enter that code, and they can start to complete their census. If they can't do it that way, phone is still available, that's, that's a secondary method, and then the last, absolute last method is the out in the field counting of individuals. So, we hope that that's like very limited in terms of, you know, how many people we put out in the field to actually count. Hopefully, more, more people will do the online and the phone version. And there is a paper, I should, there is also a paper version, so you can still get a paper version and mail it back if you, if you wanna mail it back. But why give any more money if you...
And again, the importance of this is, is all about funding, of course, and that's why, thanks for coming here, Mark, I mean, this is just the initial thing, and I know, Ms. Porch, you and I were both involved back in 2010 very heavily when we did that whole census thing, and as I was telling Mark, so the importance of this is, we have to get the word out, be very interested in, in working with the mayor to get that complete count ready, how we can reach out to our various organizations that neighbor, and even our youth, I mean, that's another piece of, especially our, our high school seniors, the kids are 18 and over, trying to get them involved in our community college and union college and schools.
I mean, they make great, great employees for this, if they're 18 and over, they're great employees for this, they, they can definitely...
And elected officials are exempt, they're already trying, going online a while back, and we, we cannot do this, I thought, boy, this worked out pretty well.
But you can't, you can't do the census, it would be all set.
You can, this is a big part, but you can't, so you don't, you don't have to worry about that stipulation, you can't do this.
Well, Mark, thank you very much, if you have all the information, please get that out to us, and again, we'll be...
Yeah, I'll send you the...
And Paul Tonko has an event coming up soon, right?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, Paul's event is Friday at SCAP, 10 o'clock, and he will be kind of running through a lot of this information. I, I heard his presentation today, and it was a heavy focus on the congressional district, so he has some maps which he brought to show you population, you know, kind of the areas which will be fine hard to count in Scanty, Albany, so he brought those maps to kind of show people, you know, what we're looking at. So, he'll, he'll be there with some good information, if you can attend SCAP at 10 o'clock, welcome everyone.
Alright, thanks again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Alright, there's nothing else to come before our committee, I need a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Second, I'll pay the seat, thank you very much, and move on to government.
I will call our operations to order, the first item is an update.
Now, we need you to be on the right side, am I correct, or is it in my corner, because I'm gonna put you on our...
I'm gonna drink water.
Alright. Alright. Yeah. You're not alone, what are you talking about?
Okay, we know by now I'm very soft-spoken, so I'm gonna try to project my voice as much as I can, so everyone can hear me. Thank you so much for giving us some time to give you an update on the project. We've been doing a lot of reflection on this project, and we've been working on it for four years, and so we really wanted to start out with the highlights of what we've been able to accomplish, and then go into some of the barriers and limitations that we have in the project, and what we really need to make this project successful and move it to the next phase. So, I wanted, I wanna start out with just some high-level things, since we started in 2015, we've done the feasibility study with the TAP Architect Firm, in which we paid TAP $10,000 to complete. This really gave us our budget for the renovations, and also some design options to consider for us moving forward with the property. We have also been able to secure our legal team, legal counsel, with two attorneys and several different Albany Law teams since 2016. That has come at a price of about $37,000, $37,500 in kind donated from Albany Law. They have really helped us, obviously representing us, but also in our negotiations, making sure that we're, our organization is compliant with IRS regulations, helping us network with other organizations and professionals, and also helping us with some professional development and board development over these past three years. The other thing that I have here is our consultant team with Blue Light Development, who is also here. They have really helped us with financial projections and our cash flow for the first five years of the center, some preliminary design plans of the building, and initial cleaning out of the property amongst many other things. That has cost us $5,000 that we paid Blue Light, also with $10,000 of work in kind. Yeah, that's all I'll say about that. So, since 2015, we have secured our 501(c)(3), we have assembled our board of directors, who, right now, we have on our board several different licensed clinicians, and also several different educators who work either in Scanty or Albany School District. We have accumulated our advisory board for four years now, who are made up with several different individuals averaging, per each individual, 30-plus years of experience working in this community, or in similar communities. We have several partners signed on and committed to offer programming at the center, including but not limited to SoFiR Farm Rooted, which is a yoga and healing space in Albany, the Public Library, Wealth Education Exchange, which does budgeting and financial advisement and services, Citizen Action, New Choices, who does prevention programming for substance abuse disorder, and also the African-American Cultural Center, that's in Albany. So, in conjunction with that, we have four anchor organizations and businesses who have expressed interest and commitment to being anchor tenants in the building. This is Juice Factory, Amoda Child's Care NY, which is a childcare company in Albany, who is moving to Scanty, Parsons Mantle, and Community Fathers. We have several different organizations, really businesses... have several different organizations, really businesses, that are committed to doing in-kind work on the property. And these are really businesses that have reached out to us, not businesses that we've reached out to necessarily. So this is with very little outreach. Washington Irving and Berkshire Farms Construction Program, Seat Center, Bellevue Window Company, and Happy Electric. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we also hired a consultant to complete our 40-page SHIP-O application for Federal Registry to apply to have Carver on the Historical Federal Registry, as the Carver Center has just approached its 50th year. In that location, we know that it has been around for more than 50 years in the city, and it has also birthed several different nonprofit public services in this city. We did a petition very early on in this project, and received hundreds of signatures from community residents to support our project. I have personally spent four years of my time on the project, and as I would like to think that my time is invaluable, we all have to conform sometimes to the capitalist society we're in, right? So, that, that comes at an expense of at least $240,000 for the past four years. And then we also have at least 10,000 hours of logged volunteer time, which comes at about $200,000 for the past four years. So we have recently, just last month, in August, launched our Pave the Way campaign, and we currently have recruited 13 sponsors, who has, who will basically, in hopes, have their name recognition or business recognition paved in the path going to the Carver Center. We've spent at least $10,000 on all the supplies, materials, venues necessary for fundraising alone, and also this year, $10,000 for a part-time employee to do the work of fundraising. So, in total, we have provided this project with at least $522,500 in resources, and have net raised $45,000 on our own, and received pledges, including CDBG funds of $300,000, bringing us to $345,000 to get started on the renovations of this center. Thank you very much to my team who is here, who has helped us do this over the past years. I'm very grateful for you all. Some of the limitations and barriers that we have kind of worked through these past four years is the obvious that we don't have site control of the property. So we have really had to get people interested in this project from a distance. And the people who are interested really in being involved and have signed on to be anchor tenants have done so because they understand the value of this project, and are familiar with Carver and Carver's legacy. We're not really able to really show the building and the condition it's in. We haven't been able to get power to the building to check out some of the systems in the building. And, of course, we haven't been able to submit our Federal Registry application without site control. One of the number one points of feedback that we get from funders and people interested in supporting the project is to let us, let them know when we're further along with the project. So that's, you know, AKA, let us know when you're actually doing things on the building. So that has come up, that's the number one feedback that we get from funders. And so, the other thing is that we don't have a signed contract for CDBG funds or access to funds, of course. So therefore, we're not able to get any line of credit at any lending institution, which we have looked into too. So that would have to be, we would have to have a signed contract in order to do that. We have no access to funds, essentially, up until now, the grants have been basically pledges, and we haven't received any awards because of the nature of the matching funds. So, when we were writing our grant application, my, you know, personal strategy was to write our grant as a match grant, to give other funders or people the incentive that their money would be matched to the grant that we got. However, when we're not able to, when entities are able to choose and decide who the match is or, or is not, it kind of undermines our ability to have that incentive, and also to be competitive, and to really benefit our organization to have a match at all. So, up until this point, we have technically fulfilled our contractual agreement with the city to have up to $322,000 committed to the project to close on September 30. And I think really, you know, we, we have reached our capacity and what we could do for this project in order to really bring this, this project to the next phase and really start working on the renovations. We really need the full support of the council and the city and, you know, other major players. And I think we've really done all that we can up until now. And so, we're just hoping that we could have your support to move forward. That's all I got.
Any other questions?
All right. So, sustainability. I know that there, I had seen some projections, and I guess I needed to dive more into the projections that were provided, and I wanted to know if any of those projections have changed, as far as ensuring that the center would be self-sufficient, and not counting on, you know, the city to, you know, give them operating money on an annual basis.
I don't think any of the projections have changed, to my knowledge. Most of the, our operating expense projections are based on a third fee for service, a third annual sponsorships, and a third, what was the other third?
Memberships.
Memberships, yes, 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 memberships. But I think that when me and Trayvon were doing the projections, they're very conservative. They're really based on what we've been able to do these past four years. And we're really hoping that as, if we can gain site control of the property, and we can really start to renovate and be able to show the property to other people, that we'll have a lot more rental units and spaces to be developed, and a lot more partners signed on. So, we've really been able to do, you know, the best that we can with the limitations and barriers of not having the actual space to be able to show to people and get people interested in.
So have you started the SHIP-O application yet?
The SHIP-O application is complete.
Do you have a timeframe on that at all?
Well, we can't submit it until.
We have site control.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Palatico, what is this like as far as the options from the city? You know, like, for instance, can we move forward and, and put a reverter clause in, like we have with other, the other sale of city property, which would be on a timeline? Could we lease the, the building out to the entity for X amount of time? What are our different options in giving them? Is it, when you say you have the full, you want, you're asking for the full support of the city, I assume the first step in that would be access to, right? I mean, that's what the crucial piece is here now, for you to continue to move forward and submit grant applications, and get sponsors, and renters, and those kinds of things, correct? Yeah. So, are those all viable options for us to discuss?
They're all viable options. I mean, you have the same authority that you have with any other city property. You can lease it, rent it, sell it, access agreements. I do believe we have been providing access as much as wanted by the organization at this time. But if there's some issue with any of that, or you need to formalize something else, we couldn't do that.
So. I was just going to say, the money in the bank, you have $45,000 in the bank currently? Or have you, is that net, the $10,000 and the $5,000, I think there was another 10 that was spent?
That's 45 currently.
Currently. So you've paid all, you've paid out the $10,000 for the design, and then the $5,000 for the consultant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Mr. Vera, I, could you clarify, you talked about the fact that, that there's money that can't be matched to each other, and so therefore that's problematic for you? Do you want to sound that a little bit more? Or, because I had a different understanding, so.
Sure.
So, in our contract that we have with the city now, I believe David and Carl have been in talks about that. Our, our current agreement is that we have a closing day of September 30, and our contractual obligation is to, to raise $322,000. Is that the right number?
Right, right. So it's $322,000 in financial commitments.
Can you hear yourself as well? And you want to do some rest of your game? Please. You guys have done some great work. Just come on up.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, everyone.
Look at so damn.
Hi, everyone. My name is David Craft. So I'm a staff attorney at Albany Law School's Community Development Clinic. As Rosa mentioned, we've been working with her and Miracle on Craig Street from the beginning on this pad, on this project in different legal capacities. So our understanding of the contract is, and forgive me, I haven't looked at it recently, but it's $320,000 or so in financial commitments that we're supposed to raise. Under the contract, we said that the $125,000 would count towards that. So there was another, I believe, $150,000 matching grant from Metroplex that isn't counted towards that. So for that portion, we're supposed to raise, either raise or obtain a financial commitment, whether it's in the form of debt, grants, equity, for, for that remaining amount. So then that way we can actually reach the threshold. Does that make sense?
So, Mr. Coj, I don't know if you know this, that Metroplex is not willing to match the city portion? So that's what I'm understanding that you're saying. So do you know if that's fact, or what, what is, so they will not?
There needs, there needs to be showing that there's, it's a matching grant, matching funds. They aren't going to match the city's funds, they're going to match the organization's funds. So they have $45,000 raised firm. So, they can match $45,000. So they need to get to the 125, and then they would be able to match the funds. That's how, that's how the grant was written, is my understanding. I haven't looked at it in a while. That's my understanding.
So, I just want to clarify, what you're saying is Metroplex specifically said it has to be, because they did actually get a commitment, another commitment from the city. So they're saying that they won't take the city's commitment, it must be some other entity or some other way?
So, Metroplex's goal is to leverage, you know, leverage other people's money, non-public money. So, they're not going to, they're not, they can't take the city's, which is public money, and match it with the grant money from Metroplex. It needs to be, it needs to be outside the preview of the city. Do you see what I'm saying? It needs to be another pocket of money. It needs to be truly matched.
And that's very specific for this, or for all, all Metroplex grants?
Most of the grants, it depends on what it is. I mean, if there's infrastructure involved, there may be, you know, there may be funding that could be available. You know, it depends. That's a rate guillotine question. That's a question that goes back to Ray. But the goal of Metroplex is to leverage other people's money as much as possible. You know, that's why it's been around so long and doing so well, is they bring other people's money in, and take the money that Metroplex has available and help with economic development, so.
So, I mean, because that's what, that seems to be the problem here. They've come to the city and gotten the commitment and gone to Metroplex, got the commitment. But I guess the city is also saying that we can't, we wouldn't use that against Metroplex, and Metroplex is clear that we can't use the city's money as a match, so. But.
I'm looking at this, and they've raised, actually, raised more than $45,000 if you've spent money already. So, you know, you're, you're on a good trajectory. You know, they're, they're going to match whatever you raise. So, it's, you know, you're at 45 right now. So they could match the 45. But you want to get to the 125, then you can get the matching grant from Metroplex at the 125. So that's, I believe, how the grant was.
Well.
But they spent, that's what I'm saying, they've spent money already.
Right.
So. So, what do you have in the pipeline, ready to go, as far as additional funding, if you were to gain site access?
So, I just want to say one thing about the matching thing. I think it could be fine. I think the, the match with Metroplex could be fine. I think the issue is that the contract that we have with the city is not fulfilled because of that. Does that make sense? Like, we could work with Metroplex on the match, but I guess the, the issue is that that is hindering the contract with the city in which we have technically fulfilled because of the match. So it should be honored with our contract that we have. Does that make sense?
Just to be clear, so you're saying that the city, because you've got Metroplex's commitment, could, you're saying the city should say yes, then you've made the match of our amount of money that we asked for?
To free up.
Okay, just wanted to be sure.
But to answer your question, Lisa, we are Councilwoman Porazo. We are really hoping that with the Federal Registry application, and we've been working with Emily Gold, who has since retired, so we're working with a new person now. The, the SHIP-O has been kind of doing, trying to focus on spaces that are not typically, how do I say, are underrepresented in historical federal designation. And so they're really taking a look at predominantly and traditionally African-American spaces, and spaces that have really done a lot of work and connected to civil rights movement. And so we kind of have framed, you know, our application in that way. And so we're really hoping that with this new focus, and I've been to some of the, the conferences, that we can have a good foothold to get the designation, which would open us up for several different grant opportunities at the state level.
Oh, yes.
So we also have.
Open applications for lines of credit.
Which is not the preferred option, but this is with Pioneer Bank and Community Loan Fund, both of which are structured and have terms that, you know, may or may not be committed, but none of which would be committed without site control. And in those cases, it's anywhere from $10,000 to $18,000 of additional cost on the organization to carry the debt and the borrowings for the associated grants. But I also want to distinguish that between the contracts and the grant administration. The contract language is about financial commitment. We're speaking specifically towards raising additional funds just to disperse money. But all the funds we're discussing are committed.
It seems like to me at this juncture, it's chicken and egg, right? I mean, they cannot go forward. You know, four years is no joke of an amount of time to persevere through, to continue to gather resources and bring resources to the table and engage people. And, and, you know, there's no doubt that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, but they're, they're at a crossroads right now. And I think, as a council, we need to recognize that. And I don't see why we can't come up with some sort of a, a, an agreement that gives them site access but also protects the city, like a lease, or like a reverter clause that would say, okay, well, if this isn't done in this amount of time, then the property comes back to the city. Or, if you don't get your SHIP-O designation, then the property goes back to the city. Or, you could lease it for a month, you know, 12 months. It, it just seems like now is.
You got to do something.
Right.
Got to do something.
Yeah. We can either say, September 30 is here, sorry, you did a great job, but didn't work out, or we need to come up with a creative way to.
Can we just ask Kristin, if, any input on this? How, what's your feeling on all this?
Yeah, I mean, I would be, I would be willing to talk more about, you know, the match.
match with Metroplex and how it might work, something to that. I'm also kind of interested in, like, phasing of what would happen first, so like, if, yeah, so like, just in terms of construction, you know, what will be the first thing that would happen? And I think, I think from my perspective, and when we went through the CBD process, it was just not wanting to fund something that completely can't be done. So from my perspective, we have enough, you know, levers to complete the project, like, I'm always a, but I think that that is, it is important that we don't start something and then it can't be finished, and then things, you know, I mean, that's always a possibility, but that's really not the best use of, of dollars.
Yeah.
To respond to our respectful, I believe we've addressed that. I think the feasibility kind of clearly outlines the scope of work necessary, the phases that would take, labor units per item, hours of labor worked, and we based our work matrix on that. And with the funding commitments that are there, that is in excess of the total Phase One scope of work to reopen the building. So, you know, from my end, in my professional opinion, those measures are there to take a good faith step to start the project. I think if anyone is waiting on ideal circumstances, we won't get them, just to be frank. But from where I'm standing in other projects that I've seen in other community centers, an organization spending, let alone raising tens of thousands of dollars in advance of having site control is unforeseen. People don't do that on their personal homes, nor do they do that on large commercial projects. So I commend Rosa and the team prior to the work that I did on where they've gotten to this point, and I would see more than enough support to let them close.
Does it make, because it sounds like we have some conversations that we have to have with the city and Metroplex with it. Does it make sense to, once again, and it's not kicking the can down the road, and I'd suggest a very short amount of time, like, the end of November, to say, you know, so we can have those conversations, because September thirtieth is happening in a half a second. So we say by November, or October thirtieth, we need to have.
So is that September thirtieth, because October first was, or September thirtieth was the deadline for the grant, correct, to start spending? So there's nothing to say that we can't extend that, or you can't extend that to your department, another sixty days or whatever? So it's really our control of those funds, and that's why I really want to put this, right, that's why I want to put this on early, because I knew there was going to be a lot of questions from the council and from ourselves, and at the end of the work that you've done, I said, you know, let's get this down now, so we can get this conversation going, so we can really, it's just an important project to the community, because the Boys and Girls Club coming into play, that coming online, my goodness gracious, what a wonderful opportunity out there, for additional recreational and educational pieces for youth in the city of Schenectady. So I kind of like that idea, and if we can extend it, maybe put this back on for another two weeks, let's, let's keep this conversation going every two weeks at least, see where we are. Or do we want to put it on for a month? Give them four weeks, and then put it back on for the first Monday?
Of November?
In, no, in October.
October?
I don't want to lose this.
Okay. No, I was just gonna make a suggestion that, you know, I think it's pretty aggressive to have something done by the end of October, quite frankly.
Yeah, November, we said.
Well, even then, I think that's pretty aggressive, but I was just gonna suggest that if we could go to the end of December, give them three months to kind of figure out what we need to do.
Respectfully, if I may.
I don't know if you want three months.
You know, I think the September thirtieth date is important, because that's the date of purchase and sale agreement. So I want to make sure, could you communicate what we're saying here? Based on the contract, we're supposed to raise a certain amount of financial contingencies, and we've already done that.
In that case, we would have satisfied conditions to close. So if, if we could perhaps have a direct response to that, and what issues the council would have with moving forward with that option, because I think we've all acknowledged that the financing is committed, and it is in excess of the Phase One money that we need to open, based on a feasibility study and documents previously provided.
I think this is not an issue that we're going to be able to get solved here at the table today, because I did not know we were going to be having this robust of a discussion or are we prepared for. But what we could do, I mean, clearly, we have a date coming up, and all the conditions are complied with, and we, either we'll be on the same page about that or not. The council, you know, you have authority, you can pass a resolution setting whatever terms and conditions for a sale, lease, or transfer of property that you want. So if you're not satisfied with what we have, you just take a vote and change it to whatever you'd like to be. Maybe we could have the city follow up with the organization in the coming days to discuss where we're at and where we need to go, and we could put this on the agenda in two weeks for an executive session briefing from the city, and then we'll be more prepared to kind of give you what we feel is where we're at and what we need to do to move forward. And if you're not satisfied with that, you just change the terms of the agreement.
Thank you, and we invite any response. I mean, our goal is to make sure that you're comfortable, so our hope is to hear what those discomforts may be, so that we can address them and close.
And I guess my point in saying that we would move the sale date is that there are conversations that still need to be had with the city, and, you know, from, from both sides, so to, I don't want them to be abbreviated or rushed, or whatever the case may be.
Well, no, I agree.
And I, and I agree that it doesn't need to, I would like, I would like to push behind it and not say, oh, let's come back in three months, you know? I would like to say thirty days to have those conversations, to know where we're at, and then council be able to make a decision. So, and I just think that September thirtieth is too abbreviated for us to get all of those conversations in, and to have a plan as to how it flows.
I think that everybody that has questions, because I hear that there's a question, but many aren't being spoken out loud at the table, should send, you know, questions in to Mr. Kojic and Ms. Porazo, so that we can make sure that any questions from the council members are things that we can pass on to the committee, to make sure that when they do come back in two weeks, or whenever those discussions take place, that you'll be able to answer all those questions, know what those questions are, though. They're not, they'll just still come at you like they did tonight, although I think you have done a good job of addressing everything that's been asked, so. So let me just be clear, though, you were really preferring to go with the contract close date of the thirtieth?
Yes. In terms of completing the project, yes, because at, at the point where we close on site control, any one of the two lines of credits that we have could become a viable option to surpass the match hurdle with Metroplex. So that hurdle isn't insurmountable, it's just precluded by the fact that we don't have the site control necessary to find the solution we need. So either Metroplex needs to have an additional conversation, like you said, but, you know, for myself, my agenda is not motivating people in publicly elected positions to do anything they don't prefer. So I think what could be more feasible is to provide a transactional structure that allowed us to move forward. And as councilor said, which we respect, that's within your power to do. So whichever decision you make, we just invite you to make one.
Any other questions?
Mel, Walter Simkins is here as well. We're not letting you speak, Walter, just so you understand that. Come on, you want to say, come on, come on, come on.
No, I just wanted to say.
You got three minutes now. Where's the clock? I need that clock chime right here.
Well, you know, I just wanted to come out.
And be supportive of what they're doing. They've worked so hard, and they've put so much into accomplishing this, that I think is commendable, especially as a grassroots effort. This you don't usually see on this level. The other thing is that I've been reading these articles, especially about community builders and their buildings, and some of the things that are happening on that Craig Street, and, you know, now that we're doing the corridor, and to have a building there empty, it's like a, a dead space, and, and, and it'll give people somewhere to go, to be able to come up off of annoying the seniors that are across the street. And we have to kind of think ahead in terms of that, because really, with all of this getting ready to go down, and all the beautification that's going to happen on that Craig Street, Main Street corridor, to leave this as a blight, it would really just be a disservice to all of us, and especially to the community, and everything else that's being built around there. So I think I had my one minute. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you, Ms. Porterfield, bringing the update forward. And now we'll move on to, just I believe, a placeholder from the public hearing, right? Or, no, now we actually had the public hearing, a little off. So, Mr. Pelletier, go.
The update I've been asked to provide related to this agenda item is that we're kind of following a different procedure than normally. When passing legislation, there are some procedures in general that we have to follow, or you have to follow. And one of those procedures is that you can't go on final legislation until thirty days after the public hearing. And there were some concerns from the DSIC that the timeframe they have to take the next steps after that is going to be very late, and they wanted us to bring forward the idea of looking at the calendar and seeing what's possible, maybe call a special meeting in order to formally pass this legislation, because they think that might buy them a little bit of time, like an extra week or week and a half, to get their documents filed for the state and get the review started.
So you're talking about calling a special meeting, certain days, exactly thirty days from the public hearing?
Yeah.
And what date would that be?
I don't have those dates right in front of me. I don't know if the clerk actually remembers that, when that was.
So the public hearing was on the twenty-sixth, right? Last week?
Last Monday.
Which would have been the twenty-sixth, so they're looking to have a meeting, or another vote on September twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday. Correct?
That's the request, yes.
Well, there's thirty-one days in August, so would that?
Sure. The twenty-fifth.
We can do a meeting at five, we can do a meeting at five o'clock, too, right? It doesn't have to be a seven.
If you want to.
Right. What's preferable on calendars for events? We need four people here, obviously.
The twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, good for.
Twenty-fifth is better, because the lock on is the twenty-sixth.
There is? I'm set, very busy. All right, how about the twenty-fifth at five o'clock, is that all right?
You don't even have to pick the actual date now, you're open to the idea of.
He's one of the ones trying to get a consensus, I got four people, I need four, four folks to be there. Right? Are you good, or you want to do four thirty?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. Anybody?
Album here.
John? No, yeah, good. Okay, so there you go. All right, so we didn't accomplish anything, so we have to figure it out.
I may or may not be, I'm not sure.
But four or five days can make it, yes, to go to the Monday. We only have one, two, three. Very good, right? For September twenty-fifth at five o'clock? And we got, and we got, I'm sure Vince, we.
That's the best Monday anyway, the thirtieth, so.
So the concern is related, do they have to send to the state, who has sixty days to review it, and then they start coming up on the date the tax bill has to sign? And it affects, it's hard to reprint those once you do it, it affects the whole calculation.
All right, so let's go with Wednesday, the twenty-fifth at five o'clock.
Here?
Here, yes, yep, Rule 110, all right? Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other discussion in regard to the DSA-D, DSIC, this expansion? Are there any other questions? Okay, is there any other business to come before building operations? And I will ask for a motion to adjourn, moved by Mr. Reggie, signed by Ms. Porterfield, all does a favor. All right.
Call to other public safety, wait on the agenda, and the first one is update civilian police review board.
Yes, thank you, and I'll bring Mr. Shea forward. I'm sorry?
Just trying to grab a drink.
Okay. Do you want to do the bicycle safety then?
Yeah.
Go on to the next one. Go on to the next one. What are your concerns?
So there's been an issue with regards to bicycles and people riding recklessly in the middle of the roads, down the streets and so forth, and it's become an issue of public safety, both for the riders and for the motorists that are in the area. So I believe Officer Willows here to take part in the discussion. But basically, a proposal is, and this is a last resort, the officer engage with, with the young person, ask them to stop, explain why, you know, this is an issue, why it's dangerous to both themselves as well as motors, and if they comply, there's no issue. Everybody goes along happily and nothing's done. However, the police have run into a problem when they try to engage with some individuals that they don't comply and really get aggressive with both their behaviors and as well as their demeanors. So this gives them some recourse to take should, unfortunately, the bicyclist not comply. And the suggestion is to have the bicycle seized for some period of time, there's placeholders in there, it can change to however we deem fit. But the idea that there be some repercussion for bad behavior in terms of how you operate your bicycle. And when that bicycle hopefully is not taken, but if it is, then it would be held for a period of time, and then the minor, as well as the parent or guardian, would come into the police station, they would get, watch a video or some sort of educational material be provided to them on safe operation, and why this is dangerous both for themselves as well as for motorists, and the bike would be returned at that time. Again, this is intended to be a last resort, and, you know, the one other issue that came up is if the bicycle was borrowed, certainly that would be returned to the person that owns it upon proof of ownership, and then it would be immediately returned, otherwise held until the period of time is over and the parent and guardian come in. But basically, this is about public safety, it's about our neighborhoods and quality of life. I mean, it's happened all over the city, Bellevue, it's happened a number of times, Altamont Avenue, and it's just dangerous behavior. So if a kid is engaged and they stop again, no issue, everybody goes along happily.
Any other question? Go ahead, Ms. Professor.
Um, well, it depends on what exactly the person is doing. A lot of this we cannot legally do. There are some options that the city would have, depending on, you know, what direction you want to go in. In general, it is legal to ride a bike down the road. If you're doing, if we want to define exactly, you know, doing that in a hazardous way, you know, the city does have some options with that. In terms of the seizing, you can always seize evidence if there is a, you know, a crime that takes place, and you can hold it for as long as prosecutors want to hold it for. So some of this stuff, you would need to be changed a bit in order for it to comply with the law.
Yeah, because ultimately, riding a bike isn't a crime, right? So then, had a seizure come in, it would have to be.
Well, riding recklessly is illegal, first of all. Secondly, I haven't had a chance to engage with them as of yet, but I've identified an organization which we might be able to work with, mediation matters, I have to contact them, but I saw that they do quite good work, and it would be basically kids interacting with each other and saying whether or not, hey, you screwed up here, or you have to pay the price, or, you know what, you didn't do anything wrong, you know, we'll return your bike. So that might be something that we could work in that would alleviate some of those issues.
Go ahead, Ms. Professor.
So, you said you, you mentioned the section of the code. Specifically, what section of the code is coming from?
Where are you?
It says, any section of this code, so you're creating this code, so is there any place in the city code?
Yeah, this would create that code.
So there's nothing right now that, that?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
Riding on sidewalks, or as, for somebody over ten, that's.
Right, but other than that, riding the bike in the street, nothing else. All right, so, again, like, like Ms. Porazo says, seizing people's bikes, first of all, let me just say, I think I find this approach a little extreme, because the police have done a lot of work in terms of trying to interact with youth through basketball, through different coffee with a cop now, and trying to engage them. through different coffee with a cop now, and trying to engage them on a more level of like, not a, not a threatening level or, you know, where you committed a crime and now we're here to get you. And I think that this particular type of legislation, or any legislation like this, tends to undo any goodwill that's been gotten from those various types of programs. And specifically, I know, I was, when I read the paper, that there were some young people that reached out that said they would like to sit down and talk about what's going on here. And I think that would be a first approach. If there's, if there's a group that, that some, one person identified themselves in the paper, that you talk to these groups of people who are working with these youths, or you work with the police department who already give out helmets and do other things to, again, positively engage with these young people who are riding bikes. That, that would be a better way to go than immediately go to the punitive. And then, it's not written out here, but there was conversations about, you know, bringing the parent in or reporting the parent. You know, that's extremely punitive for riding a bike. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't ride bikes wildly in the street. It happened on the way down here. You know, I was driving down the street and he was like, riding the street, ride along with me. But he did, he gave me eye contact like any other driver would do, like, hey, I'm out here too. So I, I think that we should maybe try to figure out a way that engages youth in a more positive way. We may as well say, you know, let's just get that bike, and you walk home. And then, you know, I think that we should really try to start on a more positive way.
Well, that's certainly not what this says. This is absolutely last resort. If the police do engage, they are engaged, we can bring Officer Whipple up. He can talk about this a little bit, I think. And, you know, they, as far as I know, are in support of having some last resort.
Detective Police Department. I just got a chance to read over this, and he said it's a, this is like a last resort. I believe, kind of like how we handle loud music calls in the city. Somebody were sent to a loud music call, we have the right to give them a warning, say, okay, you know, turn the music off. If they don't turn it off, we can go back again, and we can actually take the music equipment that they're using to produce the sound from. Or we can issue tickets. With the juveniles right now, we don't have an option to do anything with. We can talk to them, and we just don't have an option. So this is, I believe, what you're saying would be, there's, this is one option, but I'm sure there are other options as well.
Okay. So, you know, let's just like go through a scenario here. How do you know, like, it's the same youth over and over again? You have to some way identify that young person. So you then, when you stop them with the bike, ask them their name, take their identifying information, and keep, keep track of that? So that when it happens again, then you know that this is a second offense? Because you know that they do, you know, for something to happen a second time and a third, you have to know that this is a second or third time. So how does that particular...
So I'm not sure exactly.
Exactly how this would work. But right now, we have an interview card, so if we do stop somebody, we do, we can't take their information, their identifiers, and we can look at it. But I don't know exactly how this would work.
Can I give a little more context to how the system works? One, we're talking about taking the equipment on a noise violation case. That equipment is authorized in the city code to be seized as evidence, and then until it's not fifteen days or some time period, it's held until the prosecutors say that you can have it back or the case is over, which is how it works for all evidence. The issue that makes us a tougher situation is because we're dealing with youth, where you cannot charge somebody who is below the age of sixteen with a, can't arrest them for a violation and have them prosecuted. It's only a misdemeanor and higher. So to, does not a violation or misdemeanor charge that the police would routinely bring or that we've identified that would address this behavior. So if you're going to do something, you'd have to create an unclassified misdemeanor under the city code, and then put a process in place where the evidence is seized and it can be held, and it would be returned after that prosecution is over. And that prosecution would be done by county attorney's office, the U.S., the DSS Bureau, whatever their name is over there. So that's why it's not exactly the same as the situation you're outlining. It's definitely a tricky situation because you're above seven, you're below sixteen, you're not being dealt with in the adult criminal justice system, which many of the authorities aren't available to.
Go ahead, Ms. Brazzo.
I'm very supportive of continuing to educate our youth and continuing to have our youth come forward and have discussion and have officers continue to carry the word on this. And it just sounds like it's not even legally viable, really. And it, I, I agree that, you know, I'm concerned that someone's going to get hurt, but I just struggle with taking a kid's bike away. I just do. I, I just think there's better ways to go about it and more positive ways to go about it, to continue to, to try to be vocal and engaged in, in correcting the process.
Go ahead, Ms.
Can I, can I just add here? We're not, we're not talking about individuals that are, you know, maybe swerving out into the street because there, someone's opening a car door. We're, you know, we're talking about children that are, you know, surrounding a car that's driving down Altamont Avenue, and they're kicking the door, spitting on the windshield, and they're scaring the drivers. They're, it's a, it's a safety issue. And I think, I, I think it's more prevalent over in the Rotterdam area, but I think it's, it's coming over here. And I think we need to do something, give something that the police can kind of sink their teeth in. Is this perfect? No, probably not. But this isn't, I think the police do a phenomenal job engaging the youth, and I think they do a phenomenal job with the community. But this is the extreme, the extreme measure, I think, is what we need to do, is give them something that, you know, maybe they can, you know. When I was speaking with one of the officers, he said the, the children are younger, you know, seven years old, eight years old. And that's, that's very scary for me. A seven or eight-year-old, you know, with older children riding recklessly through the city, it's very scary. And I think we need to do something so that the police have some way of, you know, holding a, you know, holding someone else accountable and kind of, I don't want to say scaring the child, but having that child understand that there's an accountability here, seriously injured, could be hurt, you could cause an accident. And I think at such a young age, they're so carefree and don't, it's not going to happen to me, kind of thing. So I think that's what this legislation is, and I think at the same time, which is common.
Just a question regarding the proof of ownership. I mean, not everyone maintains receipts, so how are we going to return a bike without legal...
Well, if, if, you know, unfortunately, don't have that, you would, because we don't want to make some, somebody come in and say, this is my bike, and it turns out it's not. So, but it would give it, be given back at the appropriate time, so it's not held forever. And that kid would get the bike. But the fact is, you either condone this type of behavior or you don't. And if you don't, then there needs to be some repercussions, because these kids are going to get hurt or they're going to get killed, which none of us want. A motorist or a senior, which we all say we're four kids or four seniors, but when it comes time, you know, somebody's going to get injured or hurt. And, you know, this is a last resort. Yes, we want the police engaging, and they are, and they're doing a great job. And they're doing it now, and hopefully that continues. But this is for those few individuals who are going to just continuously misbehave if they're caught, there needs to be repercussion. This serves a life lesson. I mean, at least they won't be in the system, but this could stop something down the road. And I think we need to protect both the kids and the minors.
Go ahead, Ms.
Just responding to what Councilperson Lucy Waduna said about the kids surrounding the car. You know, what would be helpful from our, my end, because I have to review all the legislation before it gets drafted, is, you know, what exactly is the scope of the problem? Because if we have gangs of kids on bikes surrounding cars so they can't move, I know the police would already be taking steps, because then they would have a misdemeanor that they could enforce against those kids and take them into custody and seize the bikes. So there's a way to actually define the scope of the problem and what particular actions are taking place. Then we can review those actions and see, do we already have a way to solve the problem? And if we do, great, let's do it. And if we don't, then that's where I would recommend you focus your efforts to find a solution.
Go ahead, Ms.
Well, it's helpful, and that's certainly one of the type of actions, but also the kids going down the streets doing, I mean, in some ways, it's really impressive. They're doing these wheelies down the length of streets, but they're going to get sideswiped or something and, or get killed, and it's, it's not what we want. And you have two, three kids just doing these wheelies down the middle of the road. It's that kind of behavior as well, but certainly the surrounding of cars and dangerous activity and that.
Part of it, you know, I don't know that it's immune to spouting, we can ban kids doing wheelies down the road. If they're going, you know, beyond the speed limit, or they're going too slow, and beating traffic and that kind of stuff, you can do something about that.
But there are bicycle laws, aren't there not?
Yeah, there are rules about how, you know, you use the road on a bike.
Okay. And that would break those rules, correct?
I'm not aware of any rules of that particular thing you described.
Not going, stopping at a stop sign for traffic, making, being aware of traffic rules?
Yes.
That's the kind of thing I'm talking about. I mean, I'm not, no one's interested in taking a bike from a kid, first of all. And no one's certainly interested in engaging with a kid who's doing a wheelie down the street, especially like dead-end streets or something. But when you're talking Altamont Avenue and things like that, that's dangerous.
Well, that's why I'm just trying to, we throw these things out there, and I don't want to be the road stop or the block stop, but, you know, we're talking now about people who are running stop signs. State law says running a stop sign, get a ticket. State law also says you can't enforce those tickets against children. And so now the decision's canceled. I would caution you against deciding, we're going to take something that the state's decided an adult does it, gets a ticket, and impose it as a misdemeanor on somebody who's under the age of sixteen.
That's not what we're looking to do.
Well, I'm saying that's the only way effectively to accomplish what you described.
All right. Well, I think this is something that we really need to consider and keep discussing, because this has turned into a serious problem. Like I said, I've seen it several times in Bellevue. It's happened in Altamont Avenue a number of times. You know, to just say we're going to condone this behavior, this is not good for public safety or for the kids or seniors.
Mr. Riggi, yes. It's complex, for sure. But I, I think, again, I go back a hundred years ago when I was young, police officers used to come to our schools. They taught us about bicycle safety, about tra, traffic safety. They even affixed little tags on our bicycles, so that was a way to identify, is this Vincent Riggi's bike or not? You know, because anybody could say, that's my bike, there's no registrations or anything. How are you going to prove it? Could do with a car, if it's your bike, not, is somebody going to have to recede? Probably not. But I think education is going to be a big component of this. And then naturally, last resort. But quite honestly, I haven't really witnessed this myself. I'm not saying it's not happening. What I've witnessed a lot as a walker is adults riding on the sidewalk, and that is illegal. Have we ever confiscated a bike for that reason? I don't think so. I don't think it's happened. So maybe we have to start someplace, you know, maybe that's a place to start. It's that, I don't know how many times, I mean, one guy every morning was inviting me on Broadway, and I was thinking about putting a rearview mirror on my hat or something, because I didn't know this guy was coming, but he flew by me, and if I have the side step, sidewalk's only five foot wide, if I have the side step on foot, I'd be taken out. This guy was moving, you know? And there, I see adults doing this. That, that's not children. Children do ride in the street for the most part. And I think if they're ten or under, they can ride on the sidewalk. But seeing adults do that, that's another thing. I don't know if we ever confiscated a bike. I haven't heard of that, for somebody breaking a pole.
Not that I wear my, I mean, they could be ticketed at that point, but I don't think we've ever...
That is a dangerous practice, for sure. But again, I think if somehow we could have, I know we have Detective Mashroom and Sergeant Mannix going around, maybe if they stopped by the schools and set up a program, or somebody else setting up a program with teaching bicycle safety, maybe there is a way. I know that'd be an expense. Well, we used to get little registered, little tags to put on our bikes on, on the back fender, and that, that made the kid feel good, too, that he had something registered, like a car is registered. So just something to throw out there, but that's from nineteen fifty's, but...
Just a point of clarification. I, I think because we haven't found the perfect solution yet, does not mean that any of us condone this behavior. We're all concerned about the behavior for both the safety of our drivers and our youth. But I'm also not in support of creating a special misdemeanor so we can take bikes away from kids that are, you know, underage. I, I just, I'm not. There's just got to be another way to address this. And, but I just, yeah. So, but that doesn't mean because we have the kind of solution everyone at the table is comfortable, it doesn't mean we don't need to take it.
Well, then I would suggest this discussion continue then, because quite frankly, there seems to be a lack of willingness to want to do too much. So we need to keep public safety and neighborhoods in mind, because this is impacting people throughout the city. And to sit there and wring our hands and say, oh, it's, this is awful. I mean, to Mr. Riggi's point, yes, education is a key important, engagement of our officers is important, and you're doing that. But we're talking about the ones who just fling up, you know, give the whole deep hope to the officer. So that's what we're talking about. So I would like to keep this on the agenda for discussion.
Can you also work with legal, if Falotico had some suggestions, some things that are legal, so we can able to pick that out and bring this back in two weeks, and see how we can move forward?
Ms. Waduna. So this says that this is the last resort. I'd like to hear some, some resorts before this resort. I, I think this is, you know, I'm not, I, we all agree it's a problem, and we, you know, identified it as such, but you're saying this is the last resort. So what can we do before we get here? You know, what can we, we talked about education. What can we do before we get here, where, you know, where our response is to take a child's bike? And again, in order to do that, you have to identify that child. And so I do have concerns that once a child's name gets into the system, what happens once it gets there in enough time? So that is a major concern to me. You know, and maybe you're, you're thinking, well, this child is under sixteen. Well, then when they become sixteen, seventeen, then, then what happens? So I have, I have a lot of concerns about, you know, enter, answering a child's name into, into the system. So we have to think of a better way to do this than, than to just like, like, okay, I took their bike, now I got their name, and I take their bike again, and three times, you know, three times they've made a violation, or if, God forbid, we create some type of misdemeanor, what does that become to this child, who is only guilty of riding a bike recklessly? I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but it's a thing a lot of children do in a lot of neighborhoods. So I think we just need to talk, talk about another approach to this, as opposed to immediately going to impounding bikes and keeping them and making, and having parents. I think having a parent and a child watch a video, but I think that should maybe come on the, the front part of the education, as opposed to, this is part of your requirement, I won't call it punishment, requirement after us take your bike. Let's, let's make that something we defer. Let's make that part of the summer, summer youth enrichment programs. This is just a number of ways that we can approach that before we get to this, is what I believe.
Well, to your point, education certainly is a key component, but to use your words, God forbid a child or a senior get killed. And then, you know, that's something that we should all be keeping in mind, because one of the kids I saw almost got sideswiped, and thankfully, the driver was quick enough to divert, but it was scary. And, you know, it's something we need to really address. So let's, I'll work with Mr. Falotico, we'll move forward hopefully in discussions and, you know, work with the police department some more and see what we can come up with.
So we'll have this back in two weeks.
Okay.
For more discussion. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, thank you.
Please don't leave now, will you please? Please don't leave the room.
See what happens?
Let's go.
Thanks. I invited Mr. Shea, he already sent an email on myself and Ms. Brazzo regarding the status of the civilian police review board. And they continue to do some good stuff for us in here, tenuous cases, but the membership has really, and has the ability to form at their meetings, has really hindered a lot of their work and what they can and cannot do. But I invited Mr. Shea, just come down and give us an overview, if you can, of what's happening on the, the committee, and what you see as problems with membership, and how can we help you get those forms.
That sort of fits. My goals for coming down here is, first of all, we got a nine-person committee, and there's three openings, and it's not... three openings, and it's not on me to fill them, but it's you folks. The second thing is, I really want to talk about how the slots are filled. Because when Richard Hominek turned it over to Mark, you saw Mark earlier with the census? He was the chair or president, what are we calling this? Yeah, chair before me. Richard was pretty firm in his last speech, you know, like George Washington's last speech to Congress. He said, there's a process problem with getting these seats filled. And it has to do with the fact that the individual groups nominate, but that's sort of on their time and within their bylaws. And meanwhile, we get stuck with any vacancies and have to maintain quorum rules and things like that. So I'd like you to get to think about ways to expedite that process. And the third thing, I'd like to ask for a little bit of money. Because, well, we're budgeted for zero. And we'd like to spend 400 relatively immediately and maybe almost a couple, 1,500 next year. So where do you want me to start? Do you want to start with the process? You want me to start with an overview of which groups are what? You want to hear that? Or what do you want to do?
Whatever you desire.
All right. I can't remember all nine. So I wrote them down. These represent the groups that have the nomination authority or the, the right to choose who, not necessarily in their group, but who are they nominating to join the civilian police review board? You got that? Actually, some groups have it in their bylaws. One group I know of, that it must be a member of that group. And that's an issue. A human rights issue, which has led to that seat being open for about two years. Also, if the group, uh, human rights, one group, N double A C P, another, they've had some issues disbanding and now reforming. We, I think we're going to get that one filled pretty soon. Schenectady inner center, Schenectady inner city ministry, the mayor, city council, Legum and voters, that's me. I'm the dude in the league. Municipal housing authority, chamber of commerce, and the Schenectady United Neighborhoods. Currently, the human rights committee seat is open. The N double A C P seat and the municipal housing authority seat just resigned last month. Internally, we're doing more to get tough on ourselves. No one wants to really do it, but we need to make quorum even in the summer. We've missed two in a row and that lets the police down in that we feel they're working very hard to give us cases to review, we ought to be able to clear them. It looks bad for them to have them not all done. So we really need these things filled. In terms of suggestions, how to make the process quicker? Number one, how about more groups that could possibly come up with people? How about a deadline that could be given to a group? Please come up with a nominee or we'll rotate it off to another group and give them a second shot? Or maybe everybody gets to pick two and we just keep the thing full. A committee of nine with a quorum of five, we ought to be able to make. But it's been a persistent problem throughout Mr. Hominek's career as with the reformed board. Also, Mr. Nafio had a couple missed meetings and I've had three embarrassing ones. So that's that. In terms of money, we want $400 to join the, I gotta get the name right. National Association of Civilian Oversight of Police Activities. It's called, I don't even know how they pronounce it. But we want to join, it makes perfect sense. It's citizen review boards all over the nation, have a common place, they have training, they have all sorts of things. Also, they have a database we can get into once we're members. So I want to join us as a group, we've been working on this for about a year. And, you know, sort of individual lobbying, city council people talk, we just want to come out and just say, time to give us $400. That's all we want. On the terms of what we do, we, the police, as you know, take any complaint that anybody gives, whether or not there's the form filled out and whether or not the person withdraws it. They investigate it and I'm now convinced then they do a pretty good job. We look over the investigations, we don't investigate them ourselves. We have, you know, in the charter, we have the power to do that, but of course with a zero budget and none of us with any experience, it's, that's window dressing as far as I'm concerned. Right now, we're looking at the cases. We're trying to find out for ourselves and for the groups we represent, how the police are doing, how internal affairs is doing. Do we feel that community police relations are improving? We have a subcommittee, community relations, that's me. It's not too many of us, no one else joined. I speak to groups about what we do. I report to the league every month because the league's into this. And wherever else I go. So I'm done. Anyone want to give me $400? Not me personally. Can I get out of here? And do you have any questions? I'll take any questions. Yes?
Well, let me just, let me just add a couple things to, to what Mr. Shaver said. So first of all, regarding the funding and I, and I made sure you brought that up because our budget timer's coming up. But I remember we discussed this last year to try to put funding for, for the police review board and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the mayor said he was willing to take it out of his line, out of his line in the budgets to cover that cost. So whatever paperwork, whatever we need to get to the mayor's office, I would suggest, you know, you folks do that. Also, the, the N double A C P is active again and I am sure we're very instrumental in that. And they actually gave us the, the mayor a letter of recommendation for Carl Williams in the background to be nominated, well, they need to run the pause, I guess. To be their nomination to that board. And unfortunately, neither the mayor or Alex is here from the office. So before we adjourn this, I'd really like to see if we can make a motion to get Carl's name onto our agenda. Because again, it's the mayor's recommendation, but it's the council's final approval. Because again, that would help you, because you do meet on the tent, I believe it is, or we talked, whatever it is, next Wednesday. And that would certainly need him as well.
You mean you can get him appointed next Wednesday?
Yes.
Oh, hot damn.
Right, yeah, because it would be.
He has to be worked on.
On Monday, right. And then he would, he goes next Wednesday, meeting next Wednesday.
The 11th.
Right. So it's pretty, it works out, the timing is very good. That's why I really want to make sure we move that. So in regards to nomination process, there is a piece in there that each organization can actually nominate a, a second individual to be on their, on the review board as well to act as a substitute. It's, it's in our, it's in our charter. Because I happen to read that a couple times. So it is in there, so that each group can nominate two names. So if Ed Koshua can't make it, but Carl Williams is my second choice to, to be on the committee, he can be called and be brought in. So I think that's something we have to, as a council and as the mayor's office, has to notify these groups that that option is there.
It's good news to me. You're saying, to be clear, you're saying not, not a second person, but a substitute person, alternative person for that particular meeting.
Yes, for, and that particular group, each group can nominate a second individual.
Then we could put it on the groups themselves rather than the individual.
That's correct.
Who tend to get embarrassed by holding a person, trying to hold a person accountable for their absences, particularly when we're down to just a few left that we want friendly group. So we'd put it on the group.
And then, so, so that piece is in there as well. So I, I think that's something that we again have to do a better job, the mayor's office has a better job to get their information out to individuals. Because again, this group was formed back in, what, the early 2000s? We're talking about when we did have a lot of issues in the police department. And again, Schenectady PD, everybody's done a great job. And, and you know, our neighbors to the east here are having some extreme difficulties with their police review boards as well. We've got a good one in place and we'll keep it like that. Because again, the issues are important not only to us, but to our staff at Schenectady PD as well. So I think it's something that we want to fill these board seats. Our seats are filled, the mayor's is filled. And I think, again, hopefully we can move that nomination from the N double A C P as well. All right, so I'm sorry, but I had any other questions?
Any other question for Mr. Shaver?
Nope, I guess I answered.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir. Get that information to the mayor, all right, for the 400. Yeah.
So you're saying that you're.
Yes, so.
Did you receive a confirmation from the mayor?
No, but we, and that's what I'm missing, I'm missing the confirmation. But we do have a letter from the N double A, and Gary actually acknowledged and received it yesterday, saying thank you very much and we will move on. But I did not get a letter from the mayor. But in recognition of him sending emails to me that I just wanted.
So can we, can we make a motion based on?
Getting the letter.
The letter from, from the mayor and move forward the recommendation? And I'm sorry, I don't.
Carl Williams.
Carl Williams.
Yes.
Okay, let's get that.
So who's on this board?
All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Hold on, because you're not on this board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor? Aye. So we just move in forward with the.
So the mayor, I'll get that, I'll get that with him tomorrow.
So he would be able to go to the next seat?
Following it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other business for public safety?
Mr. Williams, thank you very much.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Okay, I want to open up city development and planning and I have Mr. Wall.
So what we have in front of us is the first of two of the sidewalk assessments, which I believe are in your purview to approve still. We had a public hearing and then it kind of stopped. So my understanding was it stopped until you had pricing. That was new information to me. I was actually waiting for your approval to move forward. So that may throw a wrinkle in it for number two, but we'll find out. So what we have here are the bids. What I didn't make into the package just because of a clerical thing while I was on vacation is this piece of information, which is kind of a breakdown by address and by bid. I'm supposed to make it out, but it didn't. So what you see is, on the left, you'll see the bid. Upper left corner is the bid itself, the numbers that we received, which are in your package. We broke out two city shares. The reason that we have these two city shares is they are costs that a homeowner typically would not burden anyways. One is trees. The city is responsible for removal of trees within the right of way if they are city trees, which is what those are. The second is MPT, which is the maintenance and protection of traffic on the roads. Making sure that everything is done safely, given that these are city streets, they may be residential, but they're still city streets. So we looked at the review, we separated those two out. We brought it down to a remainder cost and we divided that remainder, remainder cost over all the properties on the block by the linear footage of their tax maps. We're trying to make this as cookie cutter and easy for residents to understand. Everyone has a, you know, certified amount of linear feet that they have. We're using that to determine, because all of the sidewalks are standard, they are five foot sidewalks, five foot wide by that amount. These are approximate costs, but they do fall in line with what our estimates were when we began this back at the beginning of the year. But like I said, some of the wrinkles that we, we didn't discuss, because like I said, this is kind of a new process, are things like the trees and MPT. So still, I'm welcome, any comments or how we want to move forward with this? Yes?
The 1031 Ardsley and 1345, those are both residences?
Those are the corner houses, that's. Yeah. Those are, well, that's the other thing.
That they're on here, it's something that we can discuss, they're, they're huge properties. Specifically, Max House, it, it's just an enormous property. So, I mean, we have them on here, but at the same point, you see some of the costs when you get in. I mean, you're at, you know, $25,000 to the resident. If he were to do it on his own, it'd probably be higher, but I'm not going to say that we're going to say that he, he has to incur that amount of cost over the time. I mean, the focus is Ardsley. But he also has a very large furniture on Ardsley. We're, we're talking, you know, over 100 feet on Ardsley. So.
This number here is just Ardsley or is that Ardsley and all the way around Union?
That.
Are you talking about 1345?
Got to be all the way around. It's not just Ardsley.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So. Karen? A question, so regarding to the six inch sidewalk, were we talking about doing a little less number on that? I, I did work it out with the DOT.
They use a fiber. And I did talk with some people with it. And the, the cost when you get into the fiber and you have the, the fingers and all that, they didn't think it was, they don't love it. Right. And then the price wise, I talked with some concrete companies and things like that, and they actually prefer the way we do it. They think that our sidewalks hold up well. And I, I have seen some experience with fiber. We have used it back when I was a junior engineer. One of the things that you have to do with it is blow the fibers off with a torch, which kind of people don't, you know, you get these burning. It, it's, it's a whole different process. So we decided to go a little bit more conservative. The pricing, they say, wouldn't be that much different, so we wanted to go with something that we thought was that. But yeah, no, we had talked about it, I did price it out, and it didn't seem to be the benefit that I thought.
Just one more follow up. We only got the one bid from Callanan. Do we know where this 179 stands? Did you have any estimate or any idea of? The one, yes, the 179.
Comes in actually pretty much dead even with our estimate if you subtract out the trees and the MPT. With the tree, that is why I kind of were trying to work this from it, is if you were to include the tree costs and the MPT costs, I could not in good faith tell a property owner that they're getting the best value. And it's also not, I mean, it, it's also not fair to a property owner without a tree problem to say you're going to absorb the tree costs and we already pay for the tree costs. Same thing with MPT. You know, you have to admit, at the end of the day, we are a large municipality, we have rules that are different. And so those are why we decided to break them out, because they really scaled off everything. And so with it, that fell, the numbers fell almost exactly within our construction estimate based off of our historic numbers. We, the, the negative that we had so far with doing it is that the entire purpose of breaking out Ardsley separate was to try to entice other companies. Companies that, you know, there was no roadwork, there was no curb work, it was one block. And for, for some reasons, that's beyond me, we did, we only got one bid. And I did not expect that. I was hoping that this would be three or four, some newcomers to the, to the scene here. Because, you know, really, we, we do a lot of work with Callanan and, you know, they're good. But what I'm getting at is that it's also, you know, we've been reading articles, you know, the construction industry is, it's booming, it's very, you know, so we're trying to recruit more people in so that we can have some more options in case they get too busy or things come up, you know? Because at the same point, we have DeCamp out now, you know, Callanan, hopefully they have the capacity to make a bid, but hopefully others do as well. Otherwise, we may not be able to, to get as much work done as we'd like, just because the industry may not be able to support kind of what we're doing.
Do they have a qualified furniture program in place, any chance? Yeah, and I mean, is that any opportunity for our youth, our young people to be involved?
Well, the bids, the bids are $200,000, so it's, it's not required. That was another reason that we were hoping that other people would come in, because it wasn't as large of a project that would require it.
So next time we do this, I would suggest we get them all together, maybe. That, that, can we do DeCamp and like this year?
Because the DeCamp project was so complex.
All because we're doing curbs.
Curbs, paving. It, it, whenever we have a, a street like a DeCamp or like that's a complete, it really, this was, this was a testbed, because it was a similar, you know, not for nothing, we were originally anticipating to have a block of McClellan and possibly a block of, you know, of Raymond. And if we had those, it would have been maybe wiser to bundle them, because they're very similar in scope. DeCamp is a whole other entity. We actually, so that's why we did it separate. But I'm going to say that we, we, we put this bid out in good faith, that we were going to attract more people to get more pricing and not, you know, push something where we're doing. One of the things that I, I had talked about when we were talking about how to break these up, is that the city did not always bundle, because by bundling, we would always have million dollar contracts that were only applicable to firms that were million dollar firms. I mean, I, I'm working, you know, as much as can be with Ron Gardner and his programs. And one of the impediments to having Ron's groups come in is that we're doing very large work. And, you know, they're not at that stage yet. But when we do have smaller, we're trying to do smaller facilities projects, smaller carpentry projects, projects that we can use. But, you know, putting out a $2-million concrete job, you're going to get very large companies that try to go for that work. You're not going to get companies that are startups or smaller. So-
So, Mr. Wall? Just to clarify. The two properties that circle on to Union Street, they don't have to do the Union Street portion, correct?
Well, that's what I kind of wanted to discuss, is this is the first time that this has been done probably in over two decades, so I don't believe they have to. I believe that the petition was for Ardsley Road. So, the idea was we were going to stop at the curb ramps, and if they wanted to extend, they would have the option to extend. However, it would not be something that would be, I'm going to, I hate to use the word forced, but required. Yeah, mandated via that, that this was not an assessment on Union Street.
I would, yes. Does everyone agree with that? That is, this is an Ardsley and keep it with Ardsley? Unless they want, unless they want to go around Union Street.
Yeah, because maybe they're more affordable now.
Exactly, exactly.
I don't know, Anthony, if we decided on 10-year quarterly with the taxes? Has that been, because these are, these are things that-
We're definitely going to do 10 years, and you can't do quarterly with taxes, because this happens to be coming at 10 years. Actually, if you, I don't know, when you plan to do this job.
We have a construction, a pre-construction meeting on Thursday, and we're hoping to start the work mid-September, maybe early October.
So, if the tax, the taxes, you know, we could, probably for this plan, you could probably put on the taxes for next year. But if you do a job, say, in 2020, in April, the tax goes already out, so we have to do municipal vouchers.
It wouldn't be until the end of the year.
So, what we plan to do is use municipal vouchers until, you know, somebody pays the taxes later on.
We are going to do municipal vouchers.
Yes, and we're thinking about doing an option, too, as I was studying stuff back in the old books. If somebody pays all in front, they would charge them interest. So, you would send them a bill for, to pull them out. If they paid it all in front, then you would not charge them interest.
Ms. Porazo?
What about people who have to pay their taxes through escrow?
Yeah, see, this will be, that's why the municipal vouchers, they would not, they would have to pay that separately as a municipal voucher.
Okay. It would still be included in the tax bill that would go to them.
No, no, it's separate. It's separate, because it's a special assessment here. It's not tax.
Details.
And like I said, one of the bigger reasons is because the different times of year, these jobs are being completed, you know.
So, is it once annual, or are we able to do it?
We can send bills.
Quarter, quarter. But that was one of the benefits, too.
Saying that you may be able to pay a quarter easier than once, some once.
Okay.
All right.
Any other thoughts before, Mr. Wall? So, all of the folks on this plan holders list actually took the bid out, is that what this says?
Yes.
Wow. And only one bid came out?
Well, they viewed it. Yeah, you'll see, these lists are always a little misleading, because what you have to do is you have to kind of look at who actually did it. So, Dodge Data, it's data. You know, Ameri Apprentice, they might look at it to see how big of a job, because they want to know. Rubric Contracting, I don't know them, but they may be a possible, Louisiana, definitely a possible. Then you have renovation, they might have just pulled it. So, I don't have to go through the whole list, but what you see is, what they do is through this website, is they look to see, is there anything applicable that they'll reach out to Callanann?
Or a Louisiana and say, hey, we like to do the striping, we're not the main, we're a lot of subs.
Okay.
So, on our paving contract specifically, we'll have two pages of polls for the specs, but only usually three or four bidders, because they're all subs to the main. So, you know, Newcastle, they're one that may be able to do the work, Callanann, or Louisiana, but there's no paving. Usually there are pavers. So, you know, Callanann, they do a lot of concrete work. We have another group, JJP, that does a lot of concrete. They didn't pull it. I mean, I can, given how much workload we have right now in engineering-
This isn't something where I can go hands-on and actually reach out to everyone. You know, we use the means that we have to go, and we trust that they're effective. If there's other means out there to get more bidders, that's great, but right now, this is, you know, the tools that I have. I mean, Carl, just for your point, this is the first one. We have details that are to be worked out. Is this ready to actually be approved and move forward, given that we now know it's a voucher issued four times a quarter that is going to be here, that Ardsley only? I just, I don't have a lot of room for delay, given the time of year. So, I don't, you know, we have the public hearings that have already occurred. We have not acknowledged and yet approved and accepted the petitions, though. That, we had the public hearing, but then we stopped.
So, this is because we needed to know this? So, Ms. Porazo?
Do we also need an exact dollar amount? So, do we need to know whether the corner properties want Union Street done before we pass it, or is it okay if we can pass it at the high amount, and then if it's less, so be it?
You don't need to have the exact amount in order to do it, because that would probably be impossible to have it. Right now, the area has been defined based on petition that was included. If you wanted to change up the area, still can be done. We put it in the final legislation, but it's been done by IFRS, so if we're to pass it based on exactly how it is now, the whole property would be-
Okay. All right. Second? Favor? Did you have a question?
No, no, no.
No?
Looking at me, I was just-
No, all right, it's all passed. All right, Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Favor? Can I call for your public services utilities, two items on the agenda? The mayor is not here for the clean choice of education. Are you talking about that?
Yeah, I've been asked to cover this.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is based on kind of what you put the presentation on, I believe, the last committee meeting, in terms of the alternative supplier of electricity. What it is a request to call for a public hearing in order to start the process to pass the legislation, which doesn't bind you to any one provider. It allows you to select any provider who's out there, but you still have to pass the underlying legislation to authorize that.
So, this is just to call for a public hearing, is this fine?
Yes.
This is for the third party that, uh-
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I was second, I want to hear what people want to say.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the second one is a ceremony resolution for Friendship Baptist Church. They're having their 100th anniversary this year, and so I'd like to give them a ceremony resolution to be presented at their event on September 13th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything else to come before we proceed to the utilities?
Will we adjourn?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
Call over to Finance Committee. The first item on the agenda is supplemental bond ordinance, construction reconstruction improvements to wastewater treatment plant and construction of a new forest main. I believe that'd be a combination of Mr. Ferrari and perhaps Mr. Wall. Um, Mr. LaFawn?
Council President, Collier, City Council. There's actually two supplement bond resolutions we'd like to bring forth. One is for the continuation of the wastewater treatment plant. As you see with the updated cost schedule we have, this includes the forest main. It's overbid of our original ordinance, which was ordinance number 21613 for 24 million for authority to borrow. Looks like the total increase is going to be up to 31,900,000. So, we're asking for an additional authority for $8 million on that to increase it by 8 million. And this, again, this, this is, the cost of construction has increased immensely, especially this season. If you have any questions, we can talk to Mr. LaFawn. But also, this helps us, this, you know, has, has, has them know that, you know, we're going to complete this progress and makes us eligible for other grants and low-interest loans through the EFC and other state governments. The second, again, the second bond resolution we're looking at is for the North Ferry Street pump station. Again, originally, we asked for 16 million in the previous ordinance, and again, the engineering and construction, and our most recent bid came to 23.9 million dollars, which is additional, another $8 million more than, than we expected. So, we're asking for another supplement, additional authority to borrow up to that much. And again, this makes us eligible for other grants.
So, what's the time frame on this? And I'm looking to see, are we going to have any more increases on this?
Paul, you want to come up? This is a very good question.
Can we do the same house?
Point of time on this side here for television viewers.
Obviously, this goes back for a number of years, our investment in wastewater treatment plant. Our primary tanks there were from 1905. They've exceeded their life. So, that process is going on. That contract has been delayed. They've hit a lot of groundwater. We hit contaminated soil down there, petroleum, PCBs, things that driven the cost up that are uncontrollable, you know, no contractor knew that was going in. I don't foresee any more increases, minor increases in costs, but this was a three-phase project. We had the improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, and we had the new forest main to convey the sewage to the wastewater treatment plant, and then obviously the pump station, that was a critical piece of infrastructure that we know we've been talking about for five years now, six years. There are some critical issues with the structure of that pump station, so you have three phases. You have the pump station to pump all the sewage from there, from point A, through the new sanitary sewer, which is a new forest main, which is about 14,000 feet to the wastewater treatment plant. And the capacity of the wastewater treatment, we had to increase there to take that extra flow. All of our prices, and not just here in Skinkey, but all over, prices are coming in high. Work is out there. People are busy. The prices are high. The other thing is with the pump station is, the location of the pump station, there's a lot of liability to that contractor. They're building 50 feet away from the river. They got to dig 35 feet down. They're going to hit water, and they also got to protect that site in any storm event and any future ice jam that comes to that site while they're building that new plant. And at the same time, they got to keep the existing pump station in operation. That is a lot of liability to a contractor, and liability is cost.
I completely and utterly understand that.
I just want to know, how far down the project? When, when is an expected completion on this?
We have a completion date of 2020. Because this is all part of an order of consent with the state, and I've already asked for an extension, you know, because we had to go out for supplemental bonding, so we weren't going to meet the notice of award, because we didn't have the bonding in place. So, I just received the letters last week extending our date to award the pump station to October 15th, which, you know, those bids have come in. The next cycle, I'll bring to you the, you know, to award the contract to the low bidders. So, they're all supposed to be done in 2020. The forest main, if winter allows, they'll continue to work this winter on the bike path. They moved the water main over this week. They'll start the actual forest main next week, right at the foot of the North Ferry Street, and then once the middles are in by October, we're looking at starting the pump station in about a year for construction.
Yeah, what potential grant funding do we have coming in to support this?
We have some grants already. We've got a $3-million Goldser grant, okay, for the pump station. We've got a $5-million WIA grant. We've got, I don't have my glasses on, we've got a $5-million WQIP grant, okay? We've got 15 million in zero interest, correct, right now? We're asking for another 5 million in zero interest. So, the money we get from EFC is at 0%, and we're also applying for another $5-million grant. So, we've received $13 million so far in grants, which, it's a lot of money, and we are applying for another 5 million in grants. So, we're taking every avenue we can to try and find some resources to, you know, help with the finances of these projects.
Yeah, so that 13 million that we do would be to, would be deducted from the 20, the total cost of this project, except for, would be applied to that?
Yeah, but we have, we have to show that that's our authority to borrow that much, including-
We have to show the commitment that we've borrowed that much money to do these projects to the end, and then, yes.
So, we adopted this in August 2018. Is it because of the length of time it's taken to get us here, the addition, that's why the cost, what's driving the cost up?
Cost of the pump station, one is length of time. A lot of bids, I mean, we've opened a number of bids that, you know, not just us, but our consultants have said, even EFC said, these prices on these projects are coming in very high. Already suing a project that's about $40 million on their wastewater treatment plant because of, you know, the sewer impact to the river. Again, this is going to, you know, reduce the impact to the river for any future, you know, we had a CSO, which is combined sewer overflow, and we, that's been re-designated by the state as an SSO, a sanitary sewer overflow. We will be no longer eligible to open that as a CSO once this project is done, because our system is not a combined system, it's a separated system. So, regulations have changed, water quality rules have changed in the Mohawk River, and these are upgrades that we've started, and we're seeing all along the Mohawk that as permits come due for different treatment plants, there are different regulations on them, and people are paying, you know, to meet the new standards for water quality to the receiving rivers.
And also, I forget, this is our third, third option on the plan.
We have three different sites.
Right.
And that pump station got moved three times.
They got moved to Governor's Square, got moved to the other side of North Ferry Street, went back to Ferry Street, and now it's being built as an all-shaped building instead of a regular pump station, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
A lot of work, thank you, Paul.
Right. The second one is on the street pump.
Make the motion.
Next item is the police chief sick time accruals and compensations. We discussed this a couple weeks ago, payout of $8,175.88. It was Ms. Porazo asked for a policy. We have provided that as a policy, but you've all have the information. The numbers are correct. Mr. Porazo, I think they'll check that. And pardon, leave it at that. Any questions, or Ms. Porazo?
I assume you worked on this? Your office worked on this?
No.
Well, he was sent, the legislation after was sent to Mr. Ferrari and Ms. White, and then it was passed on to Mr. Calatico afterward.
Have you reviewed this?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with the legality of it and where it needs to be?
Yeah, the council sets the charging conditions of employment for everybody who works in the city, so you have it really be whatever you want it to be. So, from a legality standpoint, yeah.
It sounds-
Yeah.
Mr. Iggy?
Yeah, I mean, the elephant in the room here is the language in the contract that we're, we're keep referring to. Could you give us your opinion of how this contract reads that one paragraph about the 960 hours versus, as being the trigger, versus in excess of 960 hours? That's what I'm having a problem with.
That's, I emailed the members of the council related to that, as we discussed at the last committee meeting, in terms of the clear language of the contract saying that you get the sick time retirement benefit if it's for the amount that's above that 960 hours.
So, it's in excess of 960, as it reads in-
As it reads in the contract. And then the other, I went on to say that the city's practice for the three people who have qualified for it since 2015 was to provide the full amount.
I mean, that mistake by the city, we paid out almost $30,000, and we should have paid out money by that being misread. And anybody contact you from HR to verify the verbiage in the contract before this pick-up? Because the chief signed off on it, the assistant chief signed off on it, Mr. Ferrari signed off on it, the mayor signed off on it, but it isn't what it reads. We're paying out money that shouldn't have been paid out. I don't know what else to say about it. We paid out almost $30,000 to three officers, and they should have got about eight total, going by the verbiage in this contract. I mean, the contract's a contract. That's a black and white. There's nothing bound to it here, right? So, I really have a problem with this. I don't know what else to say, because it's pretty clear what it says. What it says is, the employee will be paid 25% of the value of the sick days, leave days earned by the employee and standing to his credit in excess of 120 days and up to 240 days. So, the most you could accrue is 120 days if you maxed out. That's the most you could get. So, by using that computation for, for the chief at the 750 hours, it really doesn't wash, because he never made the 960 to start with. Even if you want to move that ahead, it's only be the difference between 960 and whatever that figure may be. Am I correct in thinking this way?
Yeah, it's what I, it's what I said to the council already. It's, the clear language of the contract reads a certain way. It says you don't get 25% until you get to that 960. 25% until you get to that 960-hour threshold. The amount above it is what you'd be paid for. That the prior director of HR gave the current director information saying that it was to be paid the way that it was, and that's why it was done that way. But yeah, going by the clear language of the contract, which is unambiguous the way it's written, which is not the way the city did it.
It's unambiguous the way it's written.
Yeah.
So by the chief signing off on it, on something that wasn't correct, I don't, I don't even know what to say about it. It costs the taxpayers an extra 20 grand, basically, is what it costs for those three officers. So moving forward with that, with that language that's in this contract, until that's changed, the language of the contract, what are we going to do? What's the future cost going to be to the city? If, again, we paid out $29,000 when we should have paid out eight with those three retirees because the language either misread or was just ignored. I don't know what else to say about it. I mean, we can go back to the old HR director, but I don't think she ever processed one because the first one would have been after 2015. It started in 1995. And I think with the payout sheets, it was 2018, 17 maybe. That's where I have a hard time putting my arms around this because the contract is clear on what you get paid on. Whether that isn't correct or not, I mean, that's what the contract is. Everybody agreed to it back when this happened. So I don't know what else to say with that.
Mr. Falatiko, the other union contracts, is 960 a trigger or the difference?
Off the top of my head, I can't answer that. I just, I can pull it up when, I can get back to you today if you needed it, or I'll step out for a few minutes, but.
No, it's just curious because I believe they were triggers and I just wanted to confirm that. So, Mr. Cogner?
Vince, you said you got three PDFs? Because I only got two.
You understand. One was on one.
Okay, I only got the two then.
One had two on it.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. Oh, there you go. Now I see.
And one other question on that, on those, the payout sheet. The only thing I see non-pensionable is vacation. So that sick time is pensionable that we overpaid on?
Again, that's something I haven't looked into in order to confirm it.
I mean, that even makes it a little worse. There's nothing against anything, but that's what the contract reads. I don't know what else to say about it.
But we're talking about sick time now, right? We're not talking about anything else. Just sick.
Yeah, but some is non-pensionable. I don't know if that's pensionable or not, but it's clear that it says non-pensionable for vacation, then pensionable vacation, then sick. So I assume, because it doesn't say it, it may be pension. But sick doesn't say anything, so I don't know if it's pensionable. It doesn't say anything.
Ms. Parrazo.
I'm sorry, I'm still confused with, like, the way I read your email today, it looks to me like all that was paid out in excess of what should have been paid out was the first 120 days, which is actually a quarter of that.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
So then it's 30 days for each person, right? That we actually paid out in excess.
Correct.
And that, by your calculations, equals $30,000?
I mean, that's what they got paid if you saw this.
Yeah, but that's not, but that wasn't, but that wasn't what.
We're talking.
The only thing, the only excess that we paid was 30 days for each officer. Because it's 100, once they reach the threshold of 120, they start to accrue the days they get paid up. We did it from zero to, so that.
Right, and that's what was correct.
But it's just 30 hours, it's just 30 days per officer. And I don't think that equates to the.
All I know is 1,008 hours on one officer that it got paid 25% of. It should have been 1,008 minus 960.
No.
No?
No. And I'm sorry, I don't mean 30 days, I mean 30 hours. What it's saying is once they reach 120 hours, from there on, it accrues and they get paid 25% of those hours.
Right.
We paid from zero all the way through. So if you take that 120 that they're not supposed to be paid and you divide it by a quarter, they would have paid 30 hours additional. Not, so that's about $900, right? So it's 36, $36. Am I interpreting this right?
It's days, not hours.
It's 30 days, okay.
So the threshold, it's 960 hours, which equals to.
That's 120 days.
120 days.
Right.
So it's the 30 days.
30 days. They had overpaid.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I believe the language is clear to Mr. Rigby's point. I think the intent would only make sense to be the 960 being a trigger. At least that's what I would anticipate. I believe that's probably what the human resource officer at the time did. If you try to piece it together, that seems the logical conclusion to Mr. Falatiko's email. Since it's been paid out, they would file a grievance almost certainly if we went against that and we likely lose, correct?
I'm not going to speculate about whether we win or lose right now. If you want to go into executive session, I.
Let's go into executive session on that and then I think that would make the most sense.
If we can talk about the contractual issues in executive session, if the council wants to, the issues about the payout, those have to be in the session.
Right. So can I have a motion to recess? All those in favor?
Hi. You want to call claims in? You want to call claims in?
Claims.
Oh, okay. I'll call claims order. Is there any, was there any signing of that settlement before the executive session? The mayor signed off? Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Oh, we're already in executive session? What do we have here? No, they're not. Okay, we're all set. Maybe one more sport will feel second right, Ms. Parrazo. All those in favor?
Hi. Executive session.